Alright, so we're recording. Um, this is the Department of Public Works, uh, Commissioners Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, October seventeenth, six oh one P M. Present before D P W Commissioners for Joe I know, Ken Layler, Dave Cook and myself, Kevin Cleary, uh, Superintendent Steve May and Bruce Martin are also in attendance. Alright. See how it looks. Uh, was there anyone who'd like to speak in public forum?
Yes. Uh, Ken Stolven, uh, eight seven seven Orbital Way, L four, Footman Mass. Had a couple of things, sent a couple of notes out. Uh, thank God Route fourteen is getting, getting there, which is wonderful. Um, Bob and I really wanted to know about what is the line marking plan for Route fourteen regarding pedestrian bicycles? Uh, what's the plan, uh, for that to be done?
The, the, the plan is, uh, well, I guess if you want to schedule is in process today, grind today?
Nope, so tomorrow morning we'll, we'll be doing layout with the marketing company and then after we lay it out, their marketing company will be milling, cause uh, state spec is we actually grind the road down like a quarter inch. And uh, and then they fill that space with the paint. So the paint is like level with the asphalt surface. So that's, that's happening tomorrow, layout and grinding and painting Thursday.
That's, I mean, it's gonna be weather a few days, I mean, probably a week, maybe a little longer, depending on the weather, obviously.
Right.
You know, there's rain coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we'll see.
Right.
But is this gonna be narrower, uh, roadway, you know, with the lines for more pedestrian bicycle on the sides?
So it'll be twelve foot lanes, very similar to the layout that was there before, uh, fog lines. Uh, one of the main differences is it'll be the bike emblems or symbols within the.
Shoulder.
Shoulder.
Yeah, so there'll be a white fog line, twelve feet and then the, the bike emblems.
Will that be bigger than it was before?
No, same size, yeah.
Did we even have them, did we have them before?
See, we didn't have, we had the fog lines before.
We had the fog line, but we didn't have the bike symbols.
Not.
It's a four inch line at the standard.
Yeah, what's the width of, uh, off the street from Washington to Bedford? Cause um, I was under the impression it was gonna be narrower than it was before.
It is.
To twelve foot lane, which is a standard lane. I guess what you're not gonna have, the fog line used to be probably near the grass of everyone's house. So it was twelve feet, twenty, whatever it was, now it's gonna be a dedicated twelve foot lane. So you'll have a wide shoulder in a standard lane instead of a no shoulder in a variable lane. It's kind of what it was before. So, I mean, it's all Mastot's plan, you, you know what I mean, it's their rules. So.
Um, talking about signs, like, uh, we've seen these flashing signs in town, you know, for, you know, to either kill around our intersections or something, anything we can do in that curve. Cause right now they're still moving by that curve and we pull out, the visibility is very quick. You look one way and I don't know if it's gonna slow down, hoping it may slow down. Is there any other, we have one sign up there, a little rectangle sign that's pass entering and leaving, I think, if I'm correct. Is there anything to be done, uh, solar to help us out there? People are concerned, because we're even more concerned now because we got the thirty-six units down the street. So you gotta be great, cause they're pulling up quick too. So we're right in the middle of this situation here and it's just a, we just don't want anything to happen.
And, and neither do I or. Yeah, so, you know, we, we've put up signs, we've put up numerous signs since I've built, been built, uh, around that corner, cars entering, exiting, uh, we, uh, cleared the corner with the brush cutter, we'll do that again. Uh, I almost think having the tunnels to the right might actually help slow down a little bit, because it seems, makes it seem like a more congested area as opposed to before, it was a big open field. Uh, you know, you, you have a good line of view looking right as you're pulling out. On the left, obviously you have the curve, there's not much we can do with the curve, the curve, the curve. So as far as solar powered light, we, I don't have any plans right now to install solar powered light. I mean, we have it, put them around town, other places, but they're a couple thousand dollars apiece and you just can't go.
Right, and most of those were grants, like the most recent ones were grants as part of the, um.
Down by Washington Bueller.
Yeah, for, um, different reasons, shared streets, complete streets.
And any chance of a, a crosswalk between our street going across, give us an opportunity, you know, some notification, people cross the street to get bicycling or to get across the water. Anything, any chance of doing anything like that? Elliot Woods says one, but I think that was for a school possibly also. But I'm not sure what the other area down, uh, school wise, children or whatever.
So we, we had one across from Elliot Woods at the rest of residents quite a few years ago, because their child was walking to the middle school.
I understand.
Uh, crosswalks are easy, we can do one after the fact up at, at Auburnville. Um, you know, if there's a lot of traffic and warranted, uh, mid-block crosswalks are ideal, especially near a curve. So I certainly wouldn't encourage anybody to pick that spot to cross the street.
Can't, it can't quite find, we went to Beaver and we, we ran, we walked Beaver down to, uh, that other big development down the end of East Bridgewater and it's tough to get across there. You walk up, you keep, you get the cars coming at you, the curve, and then you try to get to the wide, it's a wider area to get across.
I think we, we gotta be real careful about crosswalks and where we put them.
Yeah, it's just, it, mid-block crosswalks are like the worst if, if, if you have to, if we have to put them in, like, you know, kids are going to school or something like that, you know, we have installed them around town, you know. I just would say like, try to find the safest place to walk or don't like purposely cross a state numbered route.
Well, if we had the sidewalk, it wouldn't be an issue, but the problem is when we walk fourteen, we wanna walk into traffic. So, you know, you wanna be back here, and if you're doing it for Elliot Woods, do it for.
Yeah, but it's not going back for Elliot Woods. It's not going, no. No.
And you make the point that it's a, um, not mid-block. Our roadway has ninety-two units, has more traffic coming in and out because we're relatively in a lot of other places, but.
Definitely notice that during construction.
No, I, I.
Elliot Woods, okay.
Yeah, I mean, crosswalks, you just gotta be careful where we, where we put them, you know, and then we don't want anybody to get hurt, I mean, at, at night. I, and I'm assuming you don't walk at night, obviously, but, but even during the day, that's, that's a, it's tough. I don't think anybody would allow you, design wise, engineering wise, I don't think you could find any engineer to say you could put a crosswalk on that corner. Um, just because of, I don't even know if you could put a crosswalk on that street legally now because of the speeds.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, it's thirty-five?
I, you know, just, for example, we've had resident request that we put a mid-block crosswalk on Route eighteen near Rock Street. And uh, I, I, you know, for one thing was Route eighteen, so it's safe, for another thing I said, I'm not gonna put it there, because them were saying, were inviting you to cross there, saying like, yeah, here's the safe spot.
Sure.
And it's not.
But you got one for plus.
Need a light.
Forest Street.
Forest.
Yeah, well, the state, the state has that, yeah. And so they walk down the crosswalk, the sidewalk, and then they cross that forest. Again, school.
But it's, yeah, you're saying mid-block Rock Street is a mid-block.
Right, I didn't install it.
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, one, and one additional thing in the work area to the entrance by Village, is that gonna be cleaned up and brought back to the original state soon? When the construction is now done?
Yeah, they should be doing that, right, in the process of doing that right now.
Yeah, it's gonna be graded off and we'll let nature, we'll let nature take over.
Auburn Station's all done, it's seeded, it's everything, and there was a loader and trucks in there the other day hauling stuff out.
Yeah. Well, what we would like to see is maybe where the driveway is, maybe just put some bushes or something in that will grow up quickly, even if it's some, you know, like obsidian or something, but it doesn't have to be, just something vegetation to make it look like it was quicker than letting, by the nature take care of it.
I mean, something we'll have to talk about, it's just a field, you know.
Yeah, it's just open field, it's always been just a natural field, is there any concern that somebody's gonna?
But it is the, you know, on either side of the entrance, it's pretty much grown up. If you leave it like that, we're gonna have the A T Vs and stuff going through there like we have the problem with the power lines. So if we could put something, and I'm not saying.
I, I mean, I don't know if we gotta. Well, it's just, it was.
Were they hydro seeding?
It was a field.
It was vegetation though.
Yeah, just vegetation, yeah.
Roadway looking, going into the place, it was a street and then vegetation. Now it's a roadway going to entrance and then nothing, of course.
Yeah, it had been growing for whatever number of years.
Yeah, and there's no, uh, tape card grass right now either.
Wildflowers.
Yeah, wildflowers.
It just grew.
Something that grows.
I don't know, we probably at least were hydro seeding there anyway, we're like.
Not there, that's just a field that was nothing.
Yeah.
Put the.
The island.
Yeah, this is in the.
And something.
On their side, on there, I'm picturing.
Yeah, it was just a field that had, it grew and died and probably even died, so, you know. Um, I, I, I understand there's now a driveway there, I guess, I don't, I don't know. I don't wanna speak for you guys, if there's something they can just put there.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could put some of the top, once they're done, we could put some topsoil in front of that. You know, some of the stuff we have that, and believe me, that grows everything quickly, cause it compost, you know.
Yeah, there's, uh, photocompost would help it a lot.
Right, and then we'll just grow up and be wild.
Just let it.
And probably be an extreme, obviously, at this point.
And one other question, can I get a printout of, uh, Route fourteen, uh, how it bends and everything? Can I get a printout from Bedford, uh, Bedford Street down to the Brockton Line? Is there a printout you can print out from the, uh?
So you're on, wait over the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanna use that for some upcoming things on the sidewalks and I'd like to mark it up with, uh, housing and open areas and et cetera. Great, thank you.
You know, just got one more thing, I asked if you could locate our block and apparently that's not gonna happen. Do you know approximately where the line, the property line is the right away to where the, uh, car, uh, uh, tape card berm is?
I, I have no idea.
The property of.
Oh, you mean like the, the layout of the road, the actual official width of the road?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's quite a bit further in than the berm, it could be fifteen feet, twenty feet.
Well, I'd like to know where it is because I wanna, if I'm gonna put my sprinklers back in, I wanna make sure that I know where it is, so I'm not in the right away.
I would say the only people that would have that would be the county, right? Plymouth County, the deed.
Assessor's office.
The assessor's office.
It might even be on the wheel, the print that you want.
It's on the print, but I don't know where the center of the line is of the road, if it's left, right, in the middle.
Actual, I wouldn't go by the construction plan. I mean, there might be a line there that says, but I think, I think you start with the assessors.
Yeah, well, we had a marker there that was visible in the ground and we can't find it right now. So even if I knew that it was ten feet away from the concrete, the tape card berm.
Yeah.
Then I got a pretty good idea where it was, it was where the old fire hydrant was, pretty much where the old fire hydrant was.
I mean, it, it's for, for the sake of just reinstalling that, that irrigation.
Yeah.
I would think if you're ten feet back from the berm.
But I don't, I wanna know where my property line is. And we had it surveyed, we had a block there, and if somebody from D P W or the state could either put two or three flags, the distance from the edge of the road, it would be appreciated. It's, it's not a.
I, I guess if we put something there, it.
It's not.
It not, it's stone, right, it's not, because we don't have the info either.
What I'm asking for is if I know it's ten feet in from the tape card berm, I have a pretty good idea of where it is, I can poke and see if I can find the granite marker. But if I don't know if it's three feet in or fifteen feet in, it's a lot more area to poke at. And it was visible before you started. So that's all I'm asking, if it's possible.
The granite was visible?
If they, they buried it?
They buried, somebody buried it.
Had to be the state, they're the ones doing the contract.
Well, then, we'd like to have it unburied, but, cause I found the other one, looked the other end and I marked that, but I can't.
I guess I'm confused by if it's ten or fifteen, we didn't go ten or fifteen feet in, but I, I don't know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure of the area, so.
Well, you damaged my sprinkler system, which was on your property, and when you told me to put it back in, you told me to make sure I was within beyond the point, and I wanna know where the point is.
To only know that a hundred percent accurate is to get the deed and have a survey or survey your land.
How far in was the other granite powder?
It was just where the fire hydrant was, there used to be a fire hydrant there, it was pretty close to where the.
No, I mean the one that you could still see.
That's, that was it, it was pretty close.
You only had one, I thought you said there was one still there that you found.
Further on, against, uh, Steve Egan's property.
Right.
I found that one.
How far in is that?
About eight feet.
Yeah.
But who knows where the road's laid out?
Okay, well.
If we could, if you can do something, I'd appreciate it.
I'll check on our assessors, when we, when I look at tree work, I, I use that for a rough idea of where the town's property ends and private property begins.
Yeah, if you could just put a couple, like the flags they use for irrigation or something, then we'd have an idea what to look for it, okay?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll send my email there, you can send that, I think that'd be great, or you can pick it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have the minutes from September twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes to the meeting from September twelfth. There's one I can't comment on, can I?
Yeah, twenty-nine, okay, let's do the twelve and nineteen together.
Okay, now make a motion that we accept the meeting, meeting minutes from September twelfth and September nineteenth.
Second it.
Oops. All favor.
Yes.
And then we have the minutes from September twenty-nine. To turn a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the, uh, meeting minutes of September twenty-nine.
Any further discussion?
Give a second.
No, we should get a second, yeah.
Say, I'll second that.
Uh, any further discussion? All favor? Aye. Three, oh, one. David's absent, so you have sense.
Okay, so we've saved, okay. And we can't.
Well, we'll do the executive and executive. Alright, so we need to go into executive session in accordance with that general law, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three B, number three. To discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting has detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position. Also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to actually conduct collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Kevin, you shut down.
Good job.
Not yet.
Okay. Make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion and second, need roll call vote.
Dave Cook, yes.
Joe I know. Ken Layler, yes.
Kevin, yes, alright, we're now turning off the recording, cause we are in executive session.
This is subject.
Alright, so we're back into open session.
Good.
And we now, I need, now need a motion to go into executive session, mass general law, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three B, number eight, to hold an initial screening, including interviews, if they are part of the initial screening process of candidates for employment, if an open meeting would have detrimental effect on obtaining qualified candidate. So, so make that motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'm helping, I'm trying to help you.
Just trying to get Dave involved.
Alright, we have motion by Ken, seconded by Dave, roll call, vote. Joe?
Joe, speak and say yes.
Yes.
Ken?
Ken Layler, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kevin, yes, I am now turning off the recording. Alright, we are back in regular session.
In reference to the assistant mechanic, you have feelings, yes, no?
So, so, so we have, um, a request from Nathan Stewart.
Yeah.
Um, for a transfer to the assistant mechanic position. Um, with letter expressing interest in the systemic mechanic's position, my qualifications include graduating from automotive program at Southeast Regional with several student A S C certifications, working multiple mechanics in tire shop jobs. So, that's what's in front of us, um, yeah, I guess Bruce.
Yeah, so Nate, he's been here a couple of years, he has a two-year anniversary yet, but, uh, he's, um, since he's been here, he's shown a knowledge, mechanical knowledge, uh, you know, his resume, he, he, you know, he's worked at garages, he worked at Harley Davidson dealership, he's, he's certainly has mechanical aptitude and mechanical knowledge, he's, um, with John Cronshaw, moving on to another job, uh, we have an opening for an assistant mechanic, I posted it, he was the only applicant.
Yeah.
I believe that he's certainly qualified and, uh, I think he'll do a good job and he seems to work well with Ryan, which is important, cause Ryan's new mechanic.
Okay.
And it's a step up for him, so.
Come my blessing.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to promote?
Make a motion that we promote Nathan, Bruce's, uh, recommendation, second.
We have a motion by Dave, seconded by Joe, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Alright, uh, superintendent's reports.
I'll go. Uh, so Route fourteen painting, you kind of heard all about it with the gentleman in public forum, so that's gonna happen. Layout, grinding, their, their, uh, schedule is layout and grinding tomorrow and they plan on saving it Thursday.
Yeah.
So, we'll see how much they get done. I was, uh, cause originally it was gonna be three days, uh, they should finish up all the driveway ramps tomorrow, there's been some concerns from residents, you know, they, they paved the road, but then they still had the driveway ramps to all go back and do. Uh, so they plan on, they, they think they'll be done in a half a day tomorrow with the rest of the driveway ramps, so that'll be looming, receiving the edge of the roads, uh, after that. Uh, Washington Street and Warren Avenue have been paved, Whitten Center has been paved, uh, scheduling a thermo paint company to come in and do the crosswalks in Whitten Center and the stop lines and the stop stencils. And I tend to have the, uh, company that Mcmelt the asphalt that does the brick crosswalks, the brick pattern crosswalks with the injected colors and, uh, coming in in early November, uh, to do that. And they said they could do it after the lines were painted, as long as the lines were perfectly parallel in eight feet apart, cause they have a grid that they have to go by.
Great, great.
Bandstand, uh, uh, work started today, putting a new cedar roof on the bandstand. Uh, partially funded through previous, uh, article for park repairs and the, uh, friends of the park have donated to, uh, give us enough money to do that.
Excuse me, by the way, the mums look great in the center of town, going back to the crosswalk stuff. You guys did a good job.
Bruce, there was some vandalism, as you know, to, to the bottom, the floor of that, anything to prevent that from occurring again?
You know, we're really leaning and counting on getting the cameras, you know, we're at like seventeen months since they were voted at town meeting and there was some fiber optics or something that had to be installed around the park to make them connective, connectivity to the cameras we're gonna install. Um, so I, I, I wasn't leading the charge, I'm not, it's the, the I T directors doing the cameras in the park, just basically at the direction of where we want.
Alright.
You know, so it's gonna be fine. And the bandstand's gonna have one right in the center. So, like when they, if they make a mess like they did before, you know, it's one, it sounds excessive, you know, that was like taking paint and just.
Exactly.
So, um, the bandstands will get it, is getting a real cedar, they're just getting new facial boards, real cedar, uh, shingle roof with the design from back in whatever, nineteen hundred or whatever, when they have old pitches that's.
Scarlet shingles, yeah.
Yeah. So it should really look nice, especially when it's new and weathered yet. Um, library, uh, we've been doing some concrete work at the library, they request, they, you know, you know, for occasion, we get requests from other town departments, they, they asked us to do a twelve by sixteen foot concrete pad out front, so we could put a picnic table out there, so we did the site work this week and we'll pour in that Thursday along with a couple other pads up there for benches. Um, gonna be planting a couple trees soon, one in front of town hall and one in the park in memory of, uh, Mr. Campbell that recently passed, so we're gonna do, friends of the park wanna buy a tree for him, so we're gonna put a tree across from the senior center.
Nice.
Thanks.
And, uh.
And you're doing the one at town hall?
Yeah, so we're gonna go to Silvins.
Well, that, that's the historical commission doing it, they're gonna make it dedication to Marie, yeah.
So next, so we're gonna do a swamp maple in front of the town hall, that's the same, what that was there.
Yeah.
That will grow large, you know, many years from now, and we're gonna do a, like a flower and cherry tree across from senior center.
Nice.
You know, that one, that tree had died and we had to cut it down and put it right in the same spot.
Well, they moved quick on that one, a lot quicker than the historical commission did. For the Campbell tree, are they gonna have a plaque, you think, or anything?
They, I don't know if they're gonna have a plaque for the Campbell tree, I know for Marie's tree, they wanna put a plaque and she was, you know, I, she was doing some Google searching, cause there's many different ways you can do it, you can put a plaque in the ground. I told her they make like a necklace that will go around the tree that has the plaque on it and the necklace will expand with the size of the tree.
Right.
You know.
Oh, wrap it right, right around the tree, it won't be just like a fence around the, okay.
It will stretch with the tree as it grows.
That's cool, that's a good idea, yeah.
Um, those are just.
The markings for all the gas trenches, is that in the queue when you do Washington and more, um, Warren and? So the gas trenches kind of took out the yellow.
Oh, so Riley Brothers is doing.
Or is Riley doing, that's a question, how was that being?
They, they already, uh, this, they already painted the lines, like I think they were out there, Sally Morris? And.
Oh, okay.
And they painted the, some of the parking spaces off of Whitten Center.
Okay.
The parallel spaces, they're gonna do, um, the double yellow where they kind of went out to the yellow line, I'm gonna have them stop a hundred feet short of Whitten Center where the, or it's, both lanes are all new asphalt, so we can do thermo like that hundred feet leading up to the, the section. Cause they're just doing a paint.
Alright, so Riley's taking care of all the markings too, that's really kind of my question.
Okay. How about as far as, uh, the gas company digging on Auburn Street? I noticed down around number one sixty thereabouts, they just repaved the driveway there. I think it's in that area, they've got yellow markings for gas, put gas in there, it might be.
There's one sixty, can visit your house.
Be going closer to Washington Street, I think it's in that range, am I wrong?
I know they found a leak.
You don't wanna know what I have planned.
Yeah, dude.
Oh, I thought there was a moratorium, usually when they did a new road of, uh, not digging, unless.
You can't put a moratorium on a leak.
Yeah, I know, or an emergency, I was just gonna say, if it's an emergency, I can understand.
Right, if, if they ask me about repairing a leak on a newer road and I think they know it's a moratorium, I'll say, yeah, and then I'll put a, for the road opening, I'll put a one week, uh, expiration date on the road opening and they're like, well, that doesn't give us time, well, and I'll say, well, it's a leak, if it's an emergency.
Yeah, right, yeah, 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 it shouldn't be out there.
It shouldn't be out there two months from now, it must not be an emergency.
Yeah, we have a service leak at two oh eight Auburn Street, uh, that we have to cut the road.
That's what, is it my side of Harvard or the other side?
Opposite side.
Opposite side.
Down the gun line, you'll see the water running down the road.
Oh, which great, oh, it's crossed, okay, I know where you're talking, yeah, great. So Bruce, on the speed limit on Auburn, to address their, their, their issues, is that, can you have a, one of the, if it going past the speed limit, it flashes, right? Can you have something like that around that?
Oh, the digital sign, like?
Like on the inside of the bend?
So they also petition the selectmen to try to get the, uh, the speed limit lowered on Auburn Street, whole length.
Hmm.
There's also a group that wants them to lower the speed limit at the intersection of Harvard and Auburn.
Yeah.
On Auburn to twenty-five as you approach that intersection, um.
Oh, really?
Yeah, sure, there's, there's radar signs out there that tell you how fast you're going again. A radar equipped one could be, you know, three to five thousand, I don't know, just a flash and one solar powered one is a couple, man.
So, so psychologically, the only reason with that is that if, I know, I know personally, if I see that, I'm thinking there might be a cop nearby.
Yeah, you just naturally.
You mean naturally, right, you slow down just because you, you think you might get caught. I mean, David, I mean, we're trying to find something, right?
Yeah.
But I, I think out of all the, you know, if you have a sign, nobody reads it, right? Subconsciously, but if you have a flasher and it shows you thirty-five, they're going forty, forty-five, you know, in other words, you can't fight it, it, you just said, you're going forty-five. You know, in other words, you can't fight it, it you just said, they're going forty five, there's a cop down there, you know, you're speeding. Well, you realize you're going forty five, ah yes, I do, there's a light one on, so that I think that would be a. I I'd like to see you look into it and see what the price might be, see if we get a grant, see if we get some help on that. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how the boy feels, but I think this is something that might, again, you're trying to.
I mean, yeah, I I think that the street, now that it's paved, yeah, it's gonna, and not just for people, obviously, everybody on that street. I have friends that live on that street and it's gonna, I mean, it's always been a racetrack off the light. Till you get to the first corner, then it got. Bumpy and you couldn't, you know, now it's gonna get worse on the other end, you can only imagine what it's gonna be like on the straight shot going towards Brockton. Once you get around the corner at Auburnville. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's maybe something, you know, I don't wanna just push it off on, you know, another department, but, you know. Did some way to share some of that cost too. You know, I don't know. But yeah, they're not cheap, that's the problem.
Yeah, and not to pass the buck, but you know. Typically, speed issues, sign issues come from the police to us. Like, we usually don't say, okay, we wanna put a speed limit on a sign up there, they come to me and say, can you put a speed limit on the sign?
But but we had people here, in other words, we've had them a number of times now, right? Are they looking for something? We're just trying to help them out, we can't put, like, to Kevin's point, we can't put uh walks because you're saying, this is safe. Try it out and then somebody gets killed and then it's almost like, well, didn't you realize that you couldn't do that? So but something like this, I think, is a detriment, right? Everybody's, everybody's rushing around, but if if they see that they're doing forty five and a thirty five, I think they might say, okay, I gotta slow it down a little bit. Maybe, it's a whole.
We probably don't wanna send them to the police. To have it come back, right, or would we, I mean, is that a good step to? I think they should. Alright, cause he, you know, Skogland seems like he'll do all that, he's a guy that does letters, he's talked to the.
Yeah, if we give him direction.
So the police have a portable sign that does that. And they can shut it off, but it will still take the data in, they can leave it on, and it will flash to the driver, you're going as fast.
Excellent.
So that's usually. The order of things is like, the police will say, okay, the safety officer, which is my. He'll put that out and he'll collect the data. And if they say, oh, people are flying. But then the data shows, well, the average speed is forty three. Right there, then, you know, people may think you're flying with the average speed, and then there'll be outliers and it gives all that data. And then it it can, you know, that can at least you have some data to say to the residents, okay, you're you're unjustified, they're going fifty five.
Yeah, and that that could help them justify if they wanted to lower the speed limit too.
They're big, right? Well, the ones that that he put on Auburn Street when I asked him to, Christ, they're only about this big and he mounts them to a tree.
Those are small ones, yeah.
Yeah, those are small ones, I like the trailers they have when they set those, those are, you notice those.
Those are about fifteen grand.
Mileage near the hitching post in Hanson as you approach that.
They're popping up everywhere because everyone's getting the same grant, you know, we got grants and we put the. Crosswalk ones and the playground ones, you know, there's one on pun on fifty eight, just as you're approaching Route eighteen in Waymouth. You know, and then, you know, that that just showed up a cou- couple of weeks ago, the same thing, it's the single solar powered. You know, the technology is there too, like, cause before you'd always used to have to have power and connection, now you can just plop it down anywhere and. And the soul is strong enough to run.
And it might be a good both sides, this way we can collect the data, um it's gonna be a racetrack, man, I'm telling you, we already know that.
So, but I think, you know, again, not just put a law on the police, they they need to weigh in. You know, a static sign here and there, but.
Okay, yeah.
Dave, what do you got?
I told them, just getting caught up in Norton, they finished the Auburn Street last Friday. And it's all got switched over to the new force main, so now we're on the new force main now. They cleaned up Auburn Street, they paved cement work, hydro seeded. Only thing that they had left to take out of there was a trailer and then they have the fence company to put the fence up and they should be done there. And then uh the standard, as I said earlier, they cleaned up that lay down yard next to Auburnville, they've been in there, trucks have been in there. Been in there, they're pulling that out. And then I gave you guys one of these, kinda just to give you a heads up schedule, so they're gonna be lowering the structures. And stuff on Southfield, continue the punch list and then, as it says, uh Monday, the twenty third, twenty fourth, they're gonna be reclaiming the road. And then when you go behind her on the twenty fifth to thirty first, they're gonna build Thatcher and Alger. And one of the eleven place talk courses on pretty much all the streets and that should hopefully be it. For the Norton project, for the force main.
So painting where occurred, when do you think, second week of November?
That's that's in Brockton.
This is Brockton?
Yeah, that's Brockton.
Yeah, this is all Brockton on on uh the cross streets and then the main street, Southfield. Which where they had to lower the structures, kinda like they did with Auburn Street. Lower the structures, they're gonna pulverize it and then they're gonna do all that, so. They'll open by the first week in November, they should be pretty much done.
I mean, not in big traffic markings on those streets, they're just sand duds. Whatever, I mean, whatever's there gets replaced.
Yeah, we're going where in the middle of crushing now. All of that, that's really about it.
Any uh new business?
So do we have any new updates on the new building and what what's? The next steps here? You gotta vote.
Yeah, so um. Mary Beth and Frank and Justin were able to. Get confirmation that um we do not need to go to debt exclusion. So we do not have to go to vote, there's still a question on town meeting floor. But I'm not so sure that needs to be, I I have a question, I asked Mary Beth about it, I'll grab her tonight. Um cause it reads like, like a, we're borrowing money and we're gonna tax you, you know, but I don't know if that just has to be there. I I don't know, I have a question for her, I was reading the um.
They wanted us at the town meeting, and then it didn't have to be a.
But I I didn't. I know we have to, like, the articles and things that we already talked about, moving the money. That that that's on the warrant, I didn't realize there was still gonna have to be an article at town meeting to borrow. The money, but I guess it does. Yeah, but it's it's not a debt exclusion.
No, no.
Again, it's a long story, we still need to borrow the money. Still need to borrow the the additional two million dollars, so.
So to borrow the money, but pay it back for rates.
Right, and I think that's how the questions, so um. So that's going forward, that will be at town meeting, um the um the contract, I hope. Is just about finalized to go to the apparent low bidder. Um and obviously that contract will have the language of of, you know, it's obviously all pending funding. Cause nothing will be official until. Town meeting.
When's the town meeting again?
Yes, on October. The election is at Saturday, um our our quest, our our request is not needing to go to the election, we just need town meeting.
What time do we have to be at?
So it's a long warrant.
For a for a special, yeah.
It's a long one, special.
We have the snow pile, the wing pile on there.
Um yeah, so I mean, everything's moving forward, it's just kind of. And until we get the funding officially, we can't have the contract officially, but there's stuff, you know, we're doing what we can.
Did we agree on the the amount that was gonna be um needed for the uh the extra uh for the water? Was there a specific amount, remember we had?
That we still, because. That's still pending because we need to get the final cost, we need to get the final cost of the force main. And then they need to apply the ARPA and the loan forgiveness and the zero, you know, they need to calculate all that. And then say, okay, here's what's left type of, and and, you know, figure out what that payment is for the force main. And then see, okay, we have this much money in the enterprise account, we're gonna need X amount more to also pay. The additional two point two for the building, so I would guess sometime in the winter, January, February, we should be able to. We'll know what the force main is, do someone much smarter than me do all that math and then we can decide what. The rate increase will be.
And and does that have to be approved by whom? How does that get it?
That rate increase is approved by this board. This board.
Two uh two items, uh just re uh regards to the. The final cost of the sewer, uh that also. May be to be determined by how much the paving project costs, if we go over what the state gave us, whatever overage is, we added to the sewer. So that is that still, but it's good that they're wrapping up, it's close to the time that we'll the two, the paving portion is wrapping up. I don't expect it to go over, but when we were in the planning process, the contractors certainly thought that, you know, there was all these extras coming in. And it might go over, but um we'll see. So and then the other thing new is um. The the uh solid waste contract, the the deadline was Friday, last Friday at three o'clock. We only, we only had two RFPs coming. One other contractor contacted me yesterday and said, oh, they missed it, can we do we open it up again? So briefly looking at, you know, quite a few pages, but briefly looking at it, waste management is was the low bidder. And we, you know. Basically, everything else, they were a little low, a couple hundred thousand um over the life of the contract, we still have to review it. The gentleman at the D E P mentioned today in an email, I didn't get to talk to him, but something about. We'll have to have a committee to look at grading them, there was only two. And so unless that's. Some kind of rule or law, cause it's an RFP and trash is not treated like regular bids, you don't, you don't have to take the lowest bidder. And uh so I would think like a like committee, it would be this board, like, you know, we just. You know, you you guys are gonna want to say, we're gonna go with waste management or we're gonna go with, you know, they want was hobby.
They do dumpsters, but yeah, I didn't think they were doing towns.
Can the commissioners get copies of those RFPs emailed? And put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, cause I mean, the contract's up, you know, December thirty first, so I mean, obviously if we. Go with the current contractor who was a low bidder. You know, I tell you, it was, you know, just then it's not much of a transition.
Do we have to check with Board of Suckman, I mean, when the, or at least town administrator? When Frank wins the position, they always like to weigh in on contracts, so I don't know if that's actually a requirement that we. No, I mean, certainly we'll have legal counsel review. Can we just go directly? Contract.
Legal counsel, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that that's.
But the selection, you feel we can do?
The selection is is ours.
Yeah, I think certainly definitely, you know, go through.
I I think at least balance it off. Probably the same thing, you know, we can, we can send the RFPs, I mean, we give them a contract. You know, they gave us an RFP, we'll give them a contract, so, you know, we'll dust off the contract, it might be worth it to. Have Peter just look at it and see if there's anything. Trash contract, you know, it's probably pretty straightforward, but. No, no, I mean, good point, I mean, I think the contract's three years old. If not older, you know, you know.
Yeah, we did like a grading system where we're picking the. The uh the architect and or and the uh the. This is a little, this is this is like two.
Yeah, it's like. But it it sounds like there might be a same similar process, you know, and they do that. To make it all, make it all the up and up and it's all level and everybody graded all the candidates, whether you got one or a hundred. So I guess if if we can get the RFPs out of commissioners, you can get a little more information on that. And we can put it on the agenda, that would be um an executive session, cause it's a contract.
Did, when waste systems not come in, Bruce?
So we had, we had invited um six or seven to do interviews. Pre RFP interviews, which we did do. Via Zoom and then we expected all those companies to put in RFPs. And we had, we had, I think, one or two companies that we invited to do the uh pre-interviews didn't participate. And uh which we didn't think was a huge deal, but uh.
So you won't bring that company Harvey in here just for us to hear what they had to say, or that's what you're saying? Over Zoom, you already did that with all these companies?
We had pre-interviews, so so we know interview process between the board and these two companies. That left, that I think it would be more of, you read read your RFPs, then grade based on that, cause they give their history and. They're, you know, they're all about their company, so you would grade, like, he he gave me a sheet that said waste manager top and Harvey at the top and then he had like. Maybe ten things to grade them on from one to ten.
Yeah, just distribute that. And then, you know, we can decide if we, I mean, why does it hurt to bring both of them in for an interview and. You know, then we can make our decisions from there.
But Bruce, we've had no issues with waste management system.
I mean, I I think for the three, you know, for the amount of time they've been with us and, you know, I would grade them. I would rate them highly, I mean, I, we we work with them very good, I, to keep forty six hundred people happy each week.
It's impossible.
That's what they're serving, we're right at. Forty five eighty eight is. The amount of units.
Anything in old business? Date for the next meeting.
Yeah, we get there.
So.
November.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's Thanksgiving week, I have no problem on that Tuesday um.
I'll try to make it.
Well, we can check because um. You might be able to join remote.
Really? If I can hobble up, I'll come over here.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if 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 you if you still wanna join, I mean, we did it.
What is it, team uh meeting or?
You can still do that, yeah. Cause we did it, well, we did it.
You did it for um.
Um we did it for the selectmen, for the meeting that we didn't need to vote, but even the selectmen meeting before that. Justin was on Zoom and everybody else was in the room. We were all in the selectmen's room and Justin was on. Zoom. So it's still, I I didn't realize you still could do it, I obviously during COVID, we did it, but I guess it's still.
I didn't realize.
Within the guidelines of an open meeting law, so that's certainly inevitable too, so you don't have to try to hobble down, you can.
It makes sense to me.
Alright, so we'll do the twenty first at six o'clock.
Okay, twenty first at six, huh?
Love turkey.
I may, I should be able to make it.
I mean, check, I mean, it's, obviously it is Thanksgiving week, I. Come around. I don't go anywhere, not that way. Um if that's it, then I'll let you take the motion to adjourn.
Second, second, yeah, okay, I'm a little slow, okay.
Alright, all in favor?